It's good. I'd like to call a public hearing to order. It is now six o'clock PM. And I'm going to defer to my county attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Agenda item number 16 is the first public hearing of the evening. It requests the board to conduct a public hearing to formally abandon a portion of platted unapproved right-of-way totaling one-half acre and located within the Capitola subdivision and delineated on the Capitola plat, which is requested by the adjacent property owners to incorporate the right-of-way into their property. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
Madam Chair, I move option one.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam County Attorney, do we have a floor? Do we have a...
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's adopted. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the item number 19 is your first and only public hearing to approve the Westminster Presbyterian Church's expansion, type C site and development plan application. The item requests the board conduct the hearing and conditionally approve the type C site plan application. This type C action, which requires the board's approval in a quasi-judicial proceeding, will allow the church to complete their planned 12,400-square-foot expansion. The church is located within R3 currently and just north of I-10. A permitted use verification determined that the church expansion was permissible within R3 and was issued a conditional approval on October 24, 2022. At their meeting of January 27 this year, the DRC found the application sufficiently complete and recommended the board approve the application with conditions as noted in your analysis. For example, the church was required to pay $30,300 into a sidewalk area trust fund in lieu of constructing sidewalks since Henry Robertson Way is a dirt road. DSCM is present to answer any questions the board may have recommending option one. We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, I would like to entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you. It's moved by Commissioner Maddox and second by Commissioner Minor to accept option one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Madam Chair, may the record reflect that I voted in the affirmative for item number 18.
Number 18, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Coban.
Me as well, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any opposition? Hearing none. It passes unanimous. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Now, we are on item number 15.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This puts you back on the general business. As you mentioned, on item number 15, which is an item that seeks the board's adoption of a resolution approving the renaming of Wanish Way in its entirety from FAMU Way to Bragg Drive to Althea Gibson Way. At the request of Florida A&amp;M University, the City Commission initiated the proposed street renaming. The request is recommended by the Addressing Steering Committee. Should the board approve the requested street renaming, the costs of street sign replacement installation will be incurred by the city of Tallahassee. Please note that the attached resolution was mistakenly dated April 3. Should the board approve, the date would be corrected to May 3 before executing the resolution. And with that, Madam Chair, you have one speaker on this item.
Thank you.
Stanley Sims?
Y'all want another prayer? I got another one near me.
We might need one, but you're good.
I'm Stanley Sims at 1320 Avondale Way. I support this, and I want to also use this as an opportunity. Let me say this, Madam Chair, and let me say this to you, my cousin, the County Administrator. Just because I'm pro-black don't mean I'm anti-white. And the reason I'm saying that, Mr. Welch, is it's issues just like this that's on here, the renaming of this road. But I also live in the capital of Florida, and we don't even have a Barack Obama Boulevard. And guess what? Quincy does. And when I sit in this audience and I hear my elected official seem like they're not in tune to the need of the black community, I'm going to speak up to that. When I don't see you at any of our Black History programs because you say you were sick, I'm going to speak up to that. And then when issues like this here come up and you don't support it, that affects me. That's personal. I respect you, and I think that's what happened to Brian Deloitte. It's doing... Yeah, you can do that, but these are my opinions. During election times, he runs to the GOP agenda and abandons... That's... And I understand, I'm over there on Buckl... Off of Buck Lake Road, there ain't many blacks over there, ain't many progressive individuals, but don't count me out. I don't like to be looked over. My name ain't Toby.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. County Administrator, are there any more speakers?
There are no more speaker cards, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to ask Attorney David Self if, Madam Chair, if you're allowed for FAMU's University General Counsel to answer a particular question that I have.
Absolutely. If he's willing to, Attorney Self, you'll come to the podium. This is my law school classmate.
What?
From the University of Florida.
Class of '82. Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
I'm just so stunned. I didn't know.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
I know y'all went ball-sto together.
Ball-sto together.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Self, I appreciate it. Can you give us a little history about who initiated? Is this a Florida A&amp;M University initiative or...
Well, yes. Actually, former Representative Al Lawson came before the FAMU Board of Trustees two or three meetings ago, which would probably have been November, somewhere around there, and in the public comments section suggested ask the board if it would petition the city and the powers that be for renaming Wanish Way from Orange Avenue north to FAMU Way after Althea Gibson, who obviously is a tennis great, a tennis Hall of Famer, FAMU graduate. So, the Board of Trustees for FAMU agreed to that motion and the process started.
So, the request was from Orange Avenue to FAMU Way roundabout?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Self. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you.
Commissioners, that was my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Self. Attorney Self. That was my understanding, and I was excited to support the request. And looking at attachment two on page three of seven, it indicates that this comes from the city, from the city's notes, as support county, as if the county made the request, support county in the renaming of a segment of Wanish Way to Althea Gibson Way, and then in orange from Bragg Stadium south to Orange Avenue. That was cool. Commissioner William Cox moved to support the initiative by the county to rename a section of Wanish Way to Althea Gibson Way. Upon second by Commissioner Richardson, and additional discussion, the vote on the motion was unanimous in favor thereof. I am completely comfortable with the language, "a section of Wanish Way." But that's not what we have here. This is the complete renaming of Wanish Way. The city voted on, and in their record, their record indicates Bragg Stadium south to Orange Avenue. And for that reason, I like to make a motion consistent with what Congressman Lawson brought before the Board of Trustees, and that was, as Attorney Self was pointing out, from Orange Avenue to... And I like to make that motion that we name, rename Wanish Way from Orange Avenue to FAMU Way.
Is there a second? No, second by Commissioner Maddox. Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, can I just ask you that perhaps maybe the option one where it says in its entirety, could that just have been a misstatement there?
No, it wasn't a misstatement. It really has to do with... And I'm going to... I'll ask Barry to come on up. And again, I think the board has the ability to do this. We may need to make sure we get in the right posture here.
Right.
But I think this is just what, based on the guidelines that the Addressing Steering Committee looks at, that have to do with continuity for emergency services and that sort of thing, is why you see the segment reflected as it is currently here. But let me ask Barry to provide some clarification there.
Thank you.
Vince, that's accurate. Our Uniformed Street Naming and Property Numbering System ordinance... Sorry, I had to read that off the paper so long. ...states that we shall, in the case of renames or extensions of existing streets, rename the entirety of that street, or if we're extending that street, carry that current name over the entirety of that street. Most of you are familiar with many of the streets here in town, Wanish sort of being one of them, where the street, you don't necessarily change direction, but the street changes names over and over and over again as you go north, south, east, west. So, to account for that and the fact that it does cause problems for 9/11 response, we adopted policies in our code that state that a street renaming shall be the entirety of the street from end to end, not a segment of the street. That is what was... City staff was aware of that. County or City Commission may not have been aware at the time they made the motion, but city staff corrected that in the application later on, which is why the exhibit that you see as an attachment shows the entirety of Wanish Way. That is what was proffered to us. That is what was approved by your Addressing Steering Committee, which is comprised of folks from not just the county, but also City Growth Management, EMS, Tallahassee Fire, USPS, Leon County Schools, the property appraisers, everyone who might have a stake in that. So, that's what's before you tonight, and that was the recommendation made to you by the Addressing Steering Committee who oversees these things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Welch. Does anybody have any questions, Commissioner Proctor?
This is one of the concerns which comes up when commissioners make motions that our staff, after the fact, switches up what was voted on. So, Attorney Self tells us Congressman Lawson, it was not his intent, legislative intent, public intent, to name this thing other than from Orange Avenue down to FAMU Way. That was not his intent. It was not the Board of Trustees at FAMU's intent, and they didn't ask for the whole street. City of Tallahassee supported the renaming of a segment of Wanish Way, Bragg Stadium south to Orange Avenue. It was not their intent. So, how? No one has asked for the entirety. So, the property appraiser, the Address Steering Committee, the City Commission, how do they get to run over the city's commission? How can all of that just oversnuff out what the legislative intent from policymakers who are elected? Why does staff carry more weight and can take something that was not intended and stretch that on their own accord? So, if what our staff is saying to us, that they got more juice than we do, I simply like to offer another direction.
No, no, no. Madam Chair, on point before you offer the other direction, do you mind? Commissioner, Madam Chair?
Commissioner Maddox.
Is this not as simple as us? Because this is a policy that we set forth, correct?
Correct.
Just, Madam Chair, just as in everything else, if we want to do something different in policy, the board can, in fact, vote to waive policy and move forward with the motion of a segment of the road, correct?
I'm saying for clarification's sake, this is in your code.
This is in your code.
In the code, correct.
So, Madam Chair, is there a way for us to get around that, to be able to name just a segment? Because I do agree with Commissioner Proctor, and we're really just talking about campus. If there's not, there's not, but...
You can't get around your code. Now, you could, instead of approving option one, direct staff to go back to the Addressing Steering Committee and ask them if they would recommend, which I can tell you, because of what's in the code and the policy, will not be a recommendation to do what is being proposed here.
Okay. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, thank you.
No, that's fine. That was for clarification.
Madam Chair, this is just for clarification. This is the board's ordinance.
Yes, sir. I understand. Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd like to believe in integrity of this whole street, but this is the one street in Tallahassee that got four names. It's Old Bainbridge Road, it's Macomb Street, it's Railroad Avenue, it's Wanish Way. Now, we want to make it Althea Gibson. And we can't put another name and just make it five names on the same street. Because if he was... If we telling the truth, whole truth, number, the truth, to follow the policy, this street should be named Old Bainbridge Road from way out there back down to Bragg Drive. But it's called Wanish Way, it's called Railroad Avenue, it's called... Now, they want to run something down past beyond the campus, and I object to that. But this is indicative of how staff will take decisions that are made, captured in the minutes of the record, and apply and do something different that they want to do. Ain't nobody from FAMU asked for this. The City Commission didn't ask for it, Lawson didn't ask for it, and I don't want it. So, if this staff is driving the train, I don't want this crossing Orange Avenue, and if this can't be the containment factor at FAMU DRS where FAMU's name and property line stops, then we ought not... We're not ready to adopt this for prime time. But if there was ever the hypocrisy of a street, a single street with multiple names, it's dissimilar. But for some reason now, we can't stop at Orange Avenue, we got to carry it all the way down. I fail to be persuaded on this particular street of all that we have to sing... Because if we do that, then we should singularize the entire street from Bragg Drive all the way up Old Bainbridge Road and make it Althea Gibson. That would make it uniform. And I want to know if staff is prepared to do that, to go through and change every address on Bainbridge Road, every address on Macomb Street, every address on the other... Is y'all going to do that? So, is we going to believe the truth of diversity of same names, or is we going to be driven by our staff and told that we've got to drive a street down? I fail to believe that. So, I will withdraw my motion and move that we not accept the renaming of this street. It's very inconsistent with the intent of FAMU, of Lawson, of the City Commissioner Williams Cox, of Richardson, and Proctor. I ask that we not support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Okay. Let me add... Okay, before you... Let me ask the County Administrator, is there an exception on exception for... And I agree with Commissioner Proctor, that same street has four or five different names. So, is there an exception we can look at, or is it possible for us to have staff to go back and look at and reevaluate?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm here and totally, totally, completely respect the sentiment that's been expressed, and the county attorney and I were sideboring over here with respect to your ordinance and kind of the issue we find ourselves in, notwithstanding that everything has been said is, are the facts on the ground in terms of all the different names of the different segments and whatnot. Obviously, our code is set up to, especially when renames come in, to help correct those issues, going forward, not to exacerbate those. But I really have to defer to the county attorney, if you have any thoughts on that, chastity with respect to what the ordinance says and what's been expressed in terms of the board's sentiment tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Madam County Attorney? Yeah. The ordinance is going to affect prospectively. So, to the extent there are current segments of streets that have different names, that's because they were done over time. The reason the board adopted the provision in the code that currently prohibits that is because, from a public health safety perspective, and this is what the street naming steering committee does, is they evaluate impacts of EMS, fire, law enforcement, to ensure they know where they're going in the event of an emergency. So, that's why that provision is in the code the way it is. If the board wants to table this, reconsider your code, you can do that and then bring this back. If you want to start making exceptions, I think what you will hear is the concerns from the public health perspective, but that's completely within the discretion of the board to do something like that and change your code.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam County Administrator. Commissioner Coban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so the board knows where I'm at, I'm going to follow the sentiment of our two-at-large commissioners and our district commissioner on this item. You know, it's an issue prevalent in Commissioner Proctor's district and Commissioner Maddox and the chair's district. So, I'm just going to go wherever the three of you, the three of you all decide to go here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think I got a solution, Commissioner Proctor. Right now, we have an ordinance. If we send it back, no matter how many times we send it back, they're going to say no. Matter of fact, when I went over there to talk to the county attorney about it, I've never seen Chastie look this way, but I almost got slapped at a little light. Like, it was that look, like, "Are you crazy?" I was like, "Okay." I kind of liked it. It was intimidating for a moment. But that's why you got an attorney. I appreciate that, and I respect it. See her face getting red. So, here's why I think we should go with this. I've talked today, and I think we go with the sign, we go with the sign that we've done in the past. We did on Steel Way, we did it for Jordan Bowen. I think we go Althea Gibson Way from FAMU Way down to Orange, put the signage up, make it prevalent, so folks know exactly what street they're on, we're able to keep the street name the same, nothing changes there. And if we want to in the future, look at the ordinance, we can look at it. I do think the ordinance is standing on good ground, though, with what it's trying to do and what it's trying to fix from the past. So, I can't... As much as when I was trying to find a way around it, it is very logical, and that committee that we put together to review these things, just like we're bound by policy in some way, they're bound by that policy. So, if we're cool, we'll go with the signage, the signage that we've done in the past, start on FAMU Way, going down to Orange, and then in the future, if we have the opportunity, if other boards have the opportunity to entertain the thought of changing the street name, then I think we can change the street name. So, my motion, Madam Chair.
You substitute, because it's a motion on the floor.
Yeah. Or Commissioner Proctor, I'll ask you to amend your motion to be...
No, no, no. Go with a substitute.
Okay. I'll make a substitute motion that we... What would we call it? We dedicate, we dedicate the piece...
It's in your code, it's an honorary designation.
We create honorary designation for Althea Gibson, starting at FAMU Way, going on Wanish Way, all the way down to Orange Avenue with signage that's adequate enough to satisfy not just our Senator Lawson, but also FAMU in their desires to honor Ms. Gibson with that roadway. That would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? That's your substitute motion. You second, Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe?
This makes absolute sense, and I also agree with and understand the sentiments of Commissioner Proctor of stumbling blocks we often run into from that perspective. So, this sounds good, and at the risk of stepping in it, I would gather that in the future, if an entity wanted us to consider renaming, they would let us know they would be okay with the entire street per our policy, knowing that ahead of time now that they've heard this meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from either commissioners, Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair, I just will say that Reverend Sims did make a compelling point, and it strikes me that our efforts, Commissioner Maddox and I, maybe Commissioner Minor, you remember, our efforts to find some piece of pavement in this community that could bear the name of President Barack Obama, we tried. And all love for Althea Gibson, but we have not found the same love and interest in designating some roadway, pathway, dog trail, big trail, something after Barack Obama. And I think, and I'm suggesting that, you know, Spring Hill Road, I don't know if that's our street, county road, I don't know, but we had a number of names, and for some reason, there was just no room in the end for Leon County. And I'm asking that there be our reconsideration for a proper naming. Monroe, I guess that's President Monroe, and Adams, I guess that's President Adams. Adams and those presidents, we need Obama name, and I'm asking for staff to please consider some choices also. And thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for what Commissioner Welch would say, "He always works it out." There he goes again. There he goes again, working it out.
Commissioner Proctor, you want to raise that as a motion during commission time then? Because we've got a substitute on the floor.
I'll accept that as an amendment, to my pleasure.
And when we work the fire agreement out, I want you negotiating on the team. Works it out.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And I just want to... I support that motion too, but I want to... It's just ironic that this arrived in my mailbox this week. Did anybody else get it? The forum magazine with Althea Gibson on the cover, and it's for spring 2024. I mean, it's just so timely. And then on the inside, it says, "Althea Gibson, who in 1956 became the first black tennis player to win a Grand Slam event." Isn't that something?
It's amazing.
I don't remember ever getting a forum magazine before, but it was addressed to me. You all want to pick up a copy? Awesome.
Good Lord.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I vote aye. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 16. Commissioners, as you know, Florida counties are responsible for funding the medical examiner services. The item before you...
Madam Chair, move that recommendation.
Second.
We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. It was moved by Commissioner Maddox and second by Commissioner Proctor. Is there any discussion?
Will this be the last matter that we vote on for Scott Ross? Is this Scott Ross's last as lead staff member?
Yes.
Scott, congratulations. The last one.
Mr. Mayor, you may go home now.
So fitting.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, unanimous. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, move option one on item number 17.
Second. I hadn't even called item 17 yet.
I know, Madam Chair. I know. I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He's got somewhere to go. Mr. County Administrator, do you have anything on item 17? Okay, we have a motion out of turn.
I can read the motion. Madam Chair, option one ratifies the commission on status of women and girls appointment of Ashley Gilley to the Leon County, Tallahassee County Commission on Status of Women and Girls for the remainder of an unexpired term, September 30 of 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Second by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, commissioners, so much. Now, we are... We'll move to comments and our discussion items, and we'll start with our county attorney, if she has anything.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing for the board this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the request of Commissioner Maddox, I have a 45-minute presentation. No, I've...
Well, we will start with Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, you ran a heck of a meeting today. And... And Commissioners, it's good to serve on this board. I am always, I always feel honored that we are able to have discourse we do and in problem-solving way we do, and everybody has unique attributes that they bring to the board, and we recognize each other for them. And, you know, not all elected bodies are that way. Even in times when we fight, we still find a way to understand the strengths that we each have and the weaknesses that we each have, and we respect each other for it. So the quorum that this board shows, the way we work together, and the leadership from our chair, it demands such. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Anything further? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just echo those sentiments, and I'm very glad to serve with everyone on here in such a friendly collegial way, doing the people's business. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate the sentiments of my colleagues here. Also, a couple very quick updates. Last Friday, I joined the CRTPA and RSNH consultants to walk up North Monroe, observe some of the specific safety opportunities for putting that in the SS4A application, the Safe Streets for All application that CRTPA will submit in May. So that was really helpful. And then finally, I don't know if you heard anything in the news, but there was a call for public input on Amtrak. There's a report that's being done by the Federal Railroad Administration to recommend a new route from Dallas to Miami, including Tallahassee in that route. So we ask for public input to be provided to the Federal Railroad Administration as input in that report. Our hope is that that new route will be proposed in the final report to Congress in spring or later this summer. Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor, we appreciate your leadership on that item. I think most of us saw you on the news media in reference to that decision for them to review those routes, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. And just one quick thing, it doesn't mean we're going to get Amtrak tomorrow. There's a lot of steps we have to jump through. We have to, you know, convince the governor and the Florida legislature that we should join the Southern Rail Commission, need to find the money for it. But so there's a long process, but I think we're going to have that first step accomplished. Thank you, ma'am.
We have to start somewhere, so we appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. Two quick things. Want to give staff a shout out. Woodville Park Playground, the asphalt that was redone, it looks great. I really appreciate the diligent work. Was there last weekend for an event, which I'll get to in a second as well, but I know I've got a lot of positive feedback. I know Commissioner Proctor and I share that territory, and it's gone a very long way to the folks down there. Additionally, the Fort Braden sidewalk outside the school is coming along great. Shout out to Public Works. I've gotten frequent texts about it, and I know it means a lot to our community out there. Lastly, last weekend down in Woodville, there's a group of folks tied to the Woodville Volunteer Fire Department that have put on an event in-house called Founder's Day. It's an event that brings all the community down from Woodville together, happens the third Saturday of March of every year, the last 11 years. They kind of go through some history of how Woodville has become to what it is today. They have live music, historical reenactors, literature, plays, vendors set up from all over Leon County. And I would like to make a motion to request a proclamation to have Woodville Founder's Day recognized as a formal day in Leon County.
Second. What y'all serving?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I've been to a lot of commission meetings, Madam Chair, but a lot of chairman, but I have to say that you almost tore the roof off the mother tonight. And we've never started off our meeting with the man who says, "Tore the roof off the mother, tore the roof off..." But George Clinton was here, and it was very exciting. Every time I see George Clinton, I tell him he has absolutely no idea how many people viewed One Nation Under Groove as our school's alma mater. He really, he laughs. But the impact of his presence, our recognition of him, his wife, meant a lot to him and his great friend. When he got that Hollywood star, Crump was with him in Los Angeles, and those two guys, "Oh, Tommy, don't..." I share the sentiments that were offered by Commissioner Maddox for the professionalism, maturity of commission, the thoughtful and open consideration that we show ideas and that we're not wedded to personalities. In a critical time like this, I find myself, Commissioner Welch, coming to your district on Thursday and inviting the community to come from 6:00 to 8:00 to lend actual support, or at least to listen to an element of our community that serves the unincorporated area, though the flag that their checks come from is the city of Tallahassee. But we're 20-some percent stakeholder, stockholder, because over 20% of the money that funds the... I prepared a memo, which I've shared, I guess we put it out, that I'm asking the county's attorney and county administrator to respond to questions, transparency about the monies that we take up from people, where does it go, who gets it. And what we can't understand is why $51 million collected in the name of fire service fee is inadequate to support all fire persons getting a raise. And currently, the 8%, which is prescribed by what's on the table, addresses the lower ranking in rank of fire persons. We can do better. I want better. And I'm asking you all to join me, Commissioners, because we only have one fire department, and it serves both... I was struck to have received some background information about our exploration out in Arizona to establish a Leon County Fire Department some years ago, and Commissioner Yorden brought me up to speed. And I do remember when, at another time, we were considering a fire department, and the fire ask of the city was that we not do it. And Vince Long is here, and he can verify that the city agreed to build the Bannaman Road Fire Department, and it would have tentacles long enough to get to outer reaches of what then was way out, Leon County. The unincorporated citizens have no elected person that they vote for relative to the control in negotiations with the firemen. They don't vote in city elections. They vote for us, and we're the only voice elected that they have, though they pay this fee. Attorney Osteen shared with us a document tonight which cited three elements. And the last one, Attorney Osteen, was that we're not duty-bound by law to pay no fire services fee when you got to. So this thing is on shaky ground. I've been told that there are only two counties in the state of Florida that have a fire fee, and the last time it went to court, it got beat down to smithereens. So what I want to do is do right by all workers, and in particular, those who placed themselves in harm's way, first responders. We can do better. I'm asking y'all to come and hear from President Joy Davis, as president of the Firemen's Union, and ask them questions, find out what you want to know. But I certainly have gotten a number of inquiries, and all, all feedback that I've gotten has been pro-fireman. And it's sad that we're taking a side, but people want the fireman done right. Thank you. Did you tell me to make a motion to Barack Obama? We already did that on the street. Okay, good, good, good. Commissioners, I'm asking for if staff can explore our signs, our signage for the championship, Florida University National Championship, something to be placed down at Famu Way and Athia Gibson, is it Boulevard, Athia Gibson Way, something there, something down there by Bethel, Amu Church at the foot of Orange Avenue, and a couple sites off of entering into campus coming from Adams Street. Request that if we can put some proper signage. Then finally, Commissioners, I wanted to ask Madam Attorney, can we establish a protocol for missing children? And recently, young lady's name was Lori Page, and she went missing for a long time before we came to the public. I'd like to know, can we establish a formal protocol that when a child goes missing, that all-point bulletin or can we put it on the county's pages? I mean, if nobody else in this city will take responsibility for a child that goes missing, I'd like for Leon County to step up and lead. The amount of time that this little girl was missing before the community heard about it, scandalous. We can do better. And my hope is that we have a protocol in place that when a child is missing from the school, the school tell the sheriff, the sheriff tell the whole wide world, county commission knows, the city knows, you put it on the whip, everything you do. But to be missing for that length of time before anybody make a big deal out of it is not... I pass it down to the county attorney. And I'm just asking, by way of motion, that we establish a protocol for missing people, children and people, and that that laps. I don't understand it, but I'd like to see and make the motion for a form of protocol for announcing and quickly getting the word out on a missing child. Something, something they think of.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, that's something. Okay. Any discussion there? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. I definitely support this idea and get information back. I'm assuming we'll get information back about how things would fit into with Amber Alerts and things like that. And if it's, given this is an open matter, if there's any information about seeing when Amber Alerts were sent out in this example, things like that, I don't know, with whatever rules there are with open matters. Thank you.
They'll cover all of that?
Right.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So perhaps it's just like a status report on what our current procedures is? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
No, 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 no. This is so grossly mishandled that we need a protocol, formal, dictating, directing what happens. Silence can't be the best way we inform. I mean, everybody going to do telepathy, so we need to crank up noise, and it has to be a process. But what happened to Lori Page is just not acceptable. We can do better, and I'm asking something strict and formal.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. So we got a motion and a second. Comment, Madam Attorney?
So based on what Commissioner Proctor is suggesting, I think what we would need to do is kind of research the initial agency point of contact for, because missing persons are usually reported to law enforcement first, and then there may or may not be issues with the dissemination of that information to external parties like the county, but I believe there can be some information gathering that occurs, and then based on that, a proposal could be brought back about a protocol that could be adopted by the county to piggyback off of the dissemination of that sort of information to the community.
Just to add on to that, we're going to say pretty much the same thing, that obviously there's extensive and immediate statewide law enforcement system that goes in place now. I think what we would be looking at based on this motion is, is there anything additionally locally we can do? And certainly, we would bring that back.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor, go back. You had mentioned Athia Gibson Way supposedly, and the fact that Famu was champion, and you were talking about it. What I understood was to highlight entrances and entrances and what have you, but you didn't do it in a form of a motion.
Okay. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to study the entry points of the Famu, that we might place proper signage acknowledging the national championship of the 2023 Rattler Football Team. And to go ahead also and prepare 24s of signage as well.
With the score.
He wants to put the winning margin in "Who Got Whipped."
Who Got Whipped. Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second? For staff to bring that back. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 And then finally, Madam Chair...
No opposition with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. I've got to remember to say that.
Finally, Madam Chairman, I know everybody will be excited. Howard University is in the big dance, and it's made top 64 teams in the nation, and they're going to be playing, I forgot, that little school we're going to whip up on Thursday. Once we whip them up, we're going to beat down, we get the right to beat that little team we're going to beat up Thursday, and then we play number one seed, the University of North Carolina. So one of us got to go face, go live, and we're fully prepared for that opportunity. So those things being said, thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, and of course, best of luck to Howard.
Amen.
They're playing the number one seed then, huh? If they get through the first... Oh, okay.
Beat the little itty-bitties.
Little bitty. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, Commissioner Minor, I want to commend you on the work you do for the North Monroe Corridor. You really are a champion for that stretch of the road, and you have really put in the work over the last six months, eight months, year to really bring improvement to that area, and I just want to commend you on that. I think that you are doing a great job on that. And in the sentiment of lauding everybody on this board, I wanted to point you out individually, doing a great job. And I just wanted to say, I wish I had had the foresight to have my name screen changed to George Welch today, because that is my government name, okay? So if somebody calls and asks for George, I say, "Wrong number." All right? But in all seriousness, congratulations, Madam Chair and Commissioner Maddox, whoever was involved in the George Clinton proclamation, that was pretty cool. I would like to ask for a proclamation for Joseph Simmons, who's the Radfordville Volunteer Fire Department, was recognized as volunteer firefighter of the year in the state of Florida.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers.
And we will be presenting that hopefully to firefighter Simmons in the rotunda or as soon as he can get here, next time or later. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Thank all the Commissioners for all your hard work, incorporation, and trying to address the needs of our county. I'd like to just point out, Mr. County Administrator, I guess this is dated today, that the county was awarded three outsp... was awarded three outstanding infrastructure project awards by the American Public Works Association, APWA. So they were recognized for the North Gaston Street Sidewalk Improvement in the category of misperformance, awarded for Ben Boulevard Drainage Improvement Phase Two in the category of stormwater, and the Visit to Information Center by the Amtrak Station in the category of historical reservation slash preservation. So I think that, that those awards, Mr. County Administrator, exposed to the caliber of individuals that we have employed here, the caliber of work that they perform, and the caliber of individuals that, that you select to carry out the work for the county. So I just want to congratulate, congratulate the county, those individuals, supervisors, managers, for these three outstanding infrastructure projects. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that later. Commissioners, I'd like to request a proclamation for, for celebrating the 75th anniversary of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated here in Leon County. They're one of the Divine Nine Greek-led organizations, and they champion scholarships to our local students. They're involved in all types of public service organization. Moved by Commissioner O'Keefe.
Phi Beta Sigma?
Sir?
Phi Beta Sigma?
Yes, Phi Beta Sigma. Right. Second by Commissioner Caban. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I vote aye with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. I would also gave all the Commissioners a copy of a great letter from our chief judge, Almond. And he is requesting that the county approve naming courtroom 3A here in honor of Circuit Judge Jimmy C. Hankinson. And it was a two-page letter that just pretty much set forth all of his accolades as, as an attorney, as a U.S. attorney, as a state attorney, and then ultimately as a circuit judge here in Leon County. And he's, I think, noted more for his, for his work on the criminal bench as the criminal attorney, when he was on the, well, no, I appeared before him on the criminal bench when I represented some criminal clients, and quite a bit when he was the judge for family cases. I had several trials before Judge, Judge Hankinson. And so I think this request would be quite in honor for him for all of the hard work that he did in the Second Judicial Circuit. And this is coming from the chief judge, who right now is Judge Almond. So I would like to entertain a motion, accepting Judge Almond's request to rename courtroom 3A in honor of Judge Jimmy Hankinson.
Is that moved?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Is there any discussion?
Just like say, all the judges that we appreciate all the work you're doing.
I'm sorry. Is there discussion?
Commissioner O'Keefe was thanking all the judges for the great work they do. And I, I second that sentiment. But I do have a concern, Madam Chair, and that is, you know, we're gonna run out of courtrooms at some point.
Courtrooms?
If we keep naming them after people. And so, you know, it's just, I get that, you know, and I, there've been a lot of judges in this courthouse. And there're gonna be a lot more in this courthouse. And a lot of them are gonna do great work and work for a long time. And so, you know, I just would caution us to be naming things after everybody when, you know, it's a precedent that we're setting. And I know we had the same conversation with Judge Jenkins, but we only got one courthouse, right? We're talking about courtrooms now, and it's like, what are we gonna do when we run out of courtrooms? We're gonna start naming jury rooms? And, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm not being facetious about that. It's, you're setting a precedent that's gonna last forever. So just something to chew on. I'll support the motion, obviously. Judge Hankinson, I'm not a jurist, but he's a very well-respected dude. I get it. And had a great career. And so I, I'll support it. But I just want to caution us, you know, we were naming, we're gonna run out of things to name in the building pretty soon. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Was there any other comments? And let me say that, yes, Madam County Attorney?
So there's actually a policy, a naming policy. So is the board's direction that you want staff to bring back a, an agenda item with a recommendation whether or not this meets the requirements of the policy? Or is the board waiving that policy in the moment now and unanimously going to approve the renaming? Just for clarification.
I think it would be smart for us to have staff look at the policy and make sure this is consistent with the policy. So if the motion can be amended to do that, for staff to look at it and weigh it and bring it back to us.
I'll accept that. I'll amend the motion to say exactly what was just said.
Thank you. And who's second? You accept. Okay. Great, great. And let me say this too, before we vote on it. We've had a lot of judges to retire, even over the years that I've been practicing law here in the Second Judicial Circuit. And the majority of them have retired in silence. They haven't gotten a request from the chief judge to name anything after them. So it doesn't happen that often, Commissioner Welch. So this is just one of the rare times. And I think usually when we receive it, it's rarely when we receive it, but when we do, it is certainly one of those situations that we need to address. And it's usually for an individual that the judiciary feels is very well deserving of. Okay. All right. Having said that, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. Okay. Commissioners, you know, May the 19th through May the 25th is Public Works Weekend Week. And I would like to request a proclamation for our Public Works Department to be presented at some time, to be designated later. Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Minor. Seconded by Commissioner Caban. Are there any discussions? Commissioner O'Keefe?
If there's an opportunity to drive a bulldozer or something, I would love to be in attendance.
An opportunity to what?
Drive a bulldozer.
Oh. Okay, you hear that, Mr. County Administrator?
That's better than ride a motor.
It can be arranged. It can be arranged. Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. I vote aye. Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. Okay. I would like to request, Mr. County Administrator, that you bring back, or maybe at the budget workshop, and I'm not sure if we need a motion for this, you tell me. But at the budget workshop, I would like for you to address the cost of providing a five percent cross-the-board raise for all county employees, the fiscal, you know, impact. We've, I think you've done it the last couple of years. I'd like to do it. And I, what I want is, I want the pay of our county employees to remain competitive. We know the last legislative session, or the legislators passed a three percent raise for all state employees. I don't, I don't think the city has announced theirs yet, but I think, but I think it's.
Trying to get the firefighters, Madam Chair.
Behave, Commissioner Proctor. So I want us to be competitive. So if you will address that at our, at our budget workshop. And I don't think I need a motion for that later. Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, can you restate the, can you, can you restate the, is that, is that a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. We just wanted to address at, at the budget workshop. And I think that's all I have. I just want to thank you, Mr. County Administrator, and your staff, and the county attorney, for always being here, answering, you know, our questions. And I thank you for all the county employees that I guess you compelled to come to our meetings that, that have to be here. You say, "That's right."
I thought that was volunteer.
It's not volunteer, but they get paid overtime, right?
Oh, sure.
Oh, sure. But thank you all for always being here. He periodically, periodically calls on you to come to the podium, Shenton. You're not, you're not listed on the agenda, but you always come, you're always prepared to address our issues and address our questions. We don't take it for granted. We really appreciate it. So thank you all. Have a good evening, good weekend. Meeting adjourned.